Okay.
Callie, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Now, you can take the flag.
We would like.
It's for the press conference. Athletic conference.
Ray, come on up. Ray Coyne, is there ever going to be a grand opening ceremony up in Waiting River?
We've got some pics.
Yeah, after the summer's over, it will be. Ray, I want to, first of all, I want to thank you. You must be telling everybody they can't park on Plastique Street because we're not getting, very few people are parking on Plastique.
It's been a good year with that.
Been a good year.
We're all over when they're there.
So I want to thank you for telling everybody.
All right. I don't know what you're talking about, but.
All right. Ray Coyne.
What do you mean Columbus?
What am I talking about?
Atlantic Conference.
Athletic. Oh, yes.
Athletic.
It's the athletic conference. I came across this the other day. I usually just go to the recreation conference, but there's some really, really good seminars and everybody's going to be there. A lot on youth sports, a lot on recreation.
You mean everybody? Who's going to be there?
All the top, all the top leaders. Yeah, I'll let you read it.
Municipal Athletic Conference?
Athletic Conference.
It's the Municipal Athletic Conference. I got a picture of that, actually.
So.
Do we know any of these people?
No, they're all, all the top vendors and everybody. It's a national show.
This means you want to go to this.
I'd like to, but, so this is my shot in the dark. It is not local.
What's the cost?
Well, I can keep it under a thousand and I can keep it to a limit that you want me to and I'll pay for the rest, but it is in Orlando.
Where is it?
Orlando. It's in November. I would even consider paying for my sub. This is, if you read some of this, it's really good stuff in here.
Do we have a travel policy? Do you have money somewhere in that budget that you can?
I was thinking of '06. So don't even touch the '01 side. It's about the programs.
If you can, I would support it. I mean, I don't think it's a bad thing, so if you can.
Not at all.
Fund it.
Well, I think Riverhead is, is almost cutting edge when it comes to a lot of this recreation stuff. And there are a lot that have to do with you, but I mean, it's, it's, the networking is phenomenal and if you can make some contacts to get new ideas, it's a good idea.
Well, even the business side of it that I want to bring here, there's a lot of good courses with that, athletic business, and a lot with youth sports, which is exploding, tournaments all over the country, so.
Maybe you can find somebody to put lights up for us.
I'm sure they'll be down there.
All right, so there's a travel policy. You have to comply with the travel policy in terms of your hotel accommodations and we give you a per diem, so we're not interested in you giving us five dollars for this meal ticket, two dollars for this meal ticket.
Laura Kalanina is probably. You know the Super Eight Hotel Motel? I don't care where I stay. Riverhead pays for a Super Four.
You upgraded, didn't you?
Probably Laura Kalanina is going to provide it from all of that stuff.
Believe it or not, it's actually cheaper to go to Orlando. The flight's very cheap and the hotels are cheap down there, too.
Yeah, and you can see Mickey Mouse, too.
No, I've seen him enough.
You work there, so.
I used to work there. You are a little goofy.
Just keep receipts for everything. You have to turn in all your receipts.
Will do.
So talk to.
I'll talk to Laura in time.
Yeah, I think either Laura or Ann Marie may be there.
Tell your boy to make it soda only.
All right, so let's talk about, we tried to do sort of ribbon cuttings, but we scheduling did not allow it and now the kids are using these particular.
Yes, they're using the one in Waiting River because on Saturday morning, it was all ready to go. So I went up there and I saw some kids up there and I let them cut the tape down and they started playing on it.
So the kids had their own ribbon cutting. That's appropriate.
Yeah, yeah, I found some and they loved it, too. So here, this is the picture of the Waiting River Playground that came out. They did a great job with it.
And Laura, can you zoom up on that Waiting River Playground?
Yeah.
Wait. Can you actually do that?
It's on top of the sand. It's not.
Yep. But it's still cemented in. Cemented in where you below the sand.
Okay. Usually you put on something in case the kid falls or something.
Yeah, well, you don't have to, that's the beauty of the beaches. You don't have to, you don't have to put any safety surface down, which saved us a lot of money.
You got it, Larry?
Yeah.
So this is the new Waiting River Playground. Thank you, Ray, and Recreation Committee. All right, I'm going to put it down. We have another picture of another playground, right?
Well, the other one that, that's up now, which we haven't cut down yet because we're still waiting for the, the grass to grow, is the one at Veterans Park. This is the one you really want for the two to five-year-olds.
Yep.
So hold that up, John. Picture of that. A little higher, John. A little higher.
It's important, too. This, this one is more conducive to a marine environment.
Yes, it has coastal paint on it. We had, we had to do it because the other one lasted eight years, which it should last 20.
Okay.
So we got, we spent a few more dollars, but it's a special paint coated on it, so it should last a lot longer.
Oh, Larry in the booth. Well, since we didn't do a ribbon cutting, the neighbors, so this is the one at Epcal.
That's up at Veterans Park, correct. And that's still, that'll be open probably at the end of the week or early next week.
For the younger kids.
Yeah, it's for two to five-year-olds. In fact, it looks like a little mini playground if I stand next to it.
That looks like Laura Jen Smith going down the slide, doesn't it?
Does that look like Laura Jen Smith coming down the slide?
It does, Laura. Right there, it looks like.
Laura going down the slide to the beach.
Yeah.
So the.
And that's the same lady standing up for this one.
I'm taking. And while I'm here, I'm going to, Veterans Park, that playground, since we reduced the size, we saved 17 grand on it because if you see the outer portions of it.
Yeah.
This is where the safety surface was supposed to go, but since the unit's not that big, we could cut down the safety surface. So we saved 17 grand.
Is that dirt or is that?
Yeah, that's a turbo, we're turbo grassing it.
Okay.
And this is, this is for children two to five.
Two to five-year-olds, correct.
So.
We even caught some kids going on it as they were trying to build it. We had to kick them off it, so.
What's the life expectancy?
Well, you're a mean person.
That, 20 years.
20 years, you think?
Yeah, I can go 20 years.
We'll see, the last one went, what, 80?
Oh, that was the one in Waiting River, yeah.
The one on the beach.
No, the one on the beach, I wouldn't say 20 years.
Well, I was there for that ribbon cutting. That was 2008. It didn't last us nine years.
No, because of the, all the nor'easters that cut.
Coming in, but this is a new coastal paint that we had specially put on this unit, so it's supposed to withstand the nor'easters better than the regular units, so we're hoping to maybe squeeze 15 out of this one. It would be nice.
It's always an issue.
It's not an inexpensive piece of equipment.
Full maintenance.
No, it looks very nice.
Yeah.
Well, I went down. I was going to play on it, but, you know.
That's where we're at, yeah? Oh, and then while I'm here, this is on the agenda, since we saved 17 grand, the pickleball people keep asking me to resurface the hockey rink. We discussed that last year, putting that street ice on it and they can redo the lines. That's about 19 grand. We saved 17 grand on this, so I figured maybe if we can put it towards the pickleball people. They will redo the line so they have actual courts within the hockey rink, but still have the hockey rink line, okay?
So how do you? See the number of people they pull in down there?
It's unbelievable.
Right by there on a Saturday morning when they're playing.
I have to be watching because I don't know what the hell pickleball is. I know it's like.
You should play. What is? It's like a wiffle ball.
It is.
Yeah. So, and then they play with.
And that's a very low.
Yeah. Oh, people love it. And they fight over it.
Oh, I thought, I go just, I go, it's like roller derby. I go home.
Do you have pictures of these for the press? I just thought about it as Denise walked in.
Yeah, no, no, I'll email them to you unless you want these.
Do you want, does the press want to take pictures of the new playgrounds?
Morning.
Morning.
I thought they were going to put a pickleball court next to the.
Hockey rink?
Skate park.
See, we are. We're still going to put another one in there because we have some room there, but we have four courts that can go on the hockey rink and the only.
And you still need another one next to the skate park?
It's that big. Yeah, people have to wait on, they have to wait on the side, all of them.
So they're not used.
There's about 60, 70 people that even show up for on a Saturday.
What people play at the time or something?
Yeah, you can play up to four, yeah.
Not today.
So they, they don't, they like, they don't mind the surface, but they, they want to smooth the surface and that's where the street ice would come in and that would help the hockey guys, too, so.
So we don't use the hockey rink for anything else?
No, we do. We do play hockey down there, too. That's why we would do it as a multi, we put lines on both sides.
Okay, so that surface stays? You don't lift it up or anything?
No, 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 it's, it's like a, I don't know what it's.
Plastic.
Yeah, something, yeah, something they put down on it, so.
But it's, it's usable for rollerblading.
It's actually better for, for rollerblading.
It doesn't tear up the wheels and such.
Yep.
We had a proposal last year from somebody that, Joe Denneseski, I believe, he wanted street ice.
Why 19, just put down lines?
No, it's the whole surface, everything.
Oh, you're going to put down a whole?
The whole project will cost about 19.
We're getting three quotes on it now.
It is kind of, except you can't ice skate.
But it's, it's a beautiful surface and what they would do is as they put in the surface, then they'll redo the lines and they'll do it according to pickleball standards. That's one of their complaints, too, is we have the lines, but it's not exactly the standards that they should have.
That's how.
So, oh man, they yell, they're, they're a vocal group, but they're a good group.
It's good to get that arena used because for a long time.
You're right. It's not used much and.
They want more and more and more, yeah. They even took it indoor.
I'd like to see it used more. I tell you, it's a beautiful rink, but it's someone to use because it's almost like.
Well, we're going to offer hockey again. We're going to start getting hockey back in there, too, because it's actually, the youth side of it is really picking up on street hockey, so we're going to offer it.
Well, that was easy.
Get your quotes.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, guys.
You are coming up here for a Halloween event? Are you bringing your children to this conference?
For November. You want to come?
I want, of course.
Absolutely.
They like Halloween, don't they?
Bring your little pumpkins with you.
They like, no, we don't want.
The one in pink is my daughter Natalie and this is her friend Anna.
Hi, Anna. Hi, Natalie. Hi.
Get you a chair.
So why are you ladies here?
Because the only chance they get is to see mom anymore. She's so busy downtown putting all these events together.
And it's summer vacation yet, so.
That's true. They have another week.
What about Riverhead?
Yes. They are both going to Plastique Street this year. They're entering fifth grade.
Oh, they're good.
Sixth grade. I'm sorry.
I made that mistake, actually, with my son. Remember, well, remember what grade in college he was going to?
At least I remember what school I'm taking.
Right. That's an important thing.
Son is going to the middle school. Okay, we're, we're all set. So first of all, before I jump into the Halloween Fest, I'm excited. Live on 25 tonight, zero chance of rain.
Absolutely.
It's going to be beautiful, so.
Patchogue is not going today, right?
And remember, live at 25.
Oh, boy.
What's that, too?
Next Thursday and this Thursday.
And next Thursday.
And next Thursday and the Thursday.
My wife called me today because on the Patchogue, the Live on 25, they have today marked as a rain day, but they had no rain.
They had no rain days.
So they, no event, no, no event in Patchogue Day.
That's correct. Their last week was last week, so hopefully everyone is going to now come to Riverhead for the next two weeks, so I think it's going to be incredible. So with that said, we're jumping into Halloween already. I have a phenomenal Halloween committee that's met already. Actually, that.
Are you ladies part of the Halloween committee?
Yeah.
Good.
Yes, Natalie's been attending the meeting since she.
You've got the 70's band.
Definitely gives us some ideas. So, you know, prior years, we had the Poe Festival and we turned it into Halloween Fest last year, which we did a one-day event. What I'd like to do is kind of bring back the Halloween weekend. Only part of it is actual bid events and the rest is just kind of letting everybody know about the events that are going on downtown already. So the aquarium has a masquerade ball on Friday night. I know Suffolk Theater is working on some sort of programming for Friday night as well. As soon as that's ready, I'm going to put that into our marketing.
Is Halloween Friday or?
Halloween, I think, is on a Tuesday this year.
Oh, okay.
So this will be the weekend before it. Saturday is going to be the big day downtown between 10:00 and 4:00. Traditionally, the aquarium has bats, barnacles, and broomsticks where kids in costume can go in at half price and then when they're done, they come out onto Main Street and the bid has our trick-or-treating that we do. So we're going to do our trick-or-treating this year between 2:30 and 4:30. That's going to leave a nice gap before the Halloween parade, which is going to start at 6:30, which gives people an opportunity to go into the restaurants. Last year, what we did is we provided a map and we worked with all the restaurants to come up with really great $5 family specials, so it's not expensive for the families to go out and enjoy themselves. So the map will be on one side and all the specials will be on the other side so people know where they can go and there's some specials for the grownups, too. So I think Mozzie had some eyeball shots and special $5 margaritas, so.
You got too excited about that.
Well, it's got to be something for everyone.
That's right. Absolutely.
Also on Saturday, what we're going to do, thanks to the Girl Scouts in Riverhead, they're going to, Melissa Elkins of Lions Club has at least 100 pumpkins being donated, so we're going to get them all carved up and we're going to have at least 100 pumpkins brought down to our Walk of the Jack-o'-lanterns this year.
Oh, wow.
We started that last year. We had some people do it, but this year, you know, we really hope to make that a really cool thing.
Yeah, my daughter and I did. She, she got a ribbon. She was so thrilled.
Yeah. It was really great. So, you know, we, having all the pumpkins donated, now people can come down and we're going to set that up behind the farmer's market in the little parking lot there so people can come and carve them and put them onto the jack-o'-lantern. Yeah. So we'll find, I hear we'll have at least 100 Girl Scouts if nobody else steps up.
Carving pumpkins.
Yeah, so. But I would love it if everyone come down and carve a pumpkin and, and we'll also give out prizes again for pumpkins, most creative, most spooky, whatever it is we determine.
I will go down there and carve instead of my garage. That's good.
Yeah, make the mess there because then we'll clean it up and put it right in the dumpster, so.
Are you going to carve one?
I carve one of you.
Maybe you'll get in the car.
I put them out in front of my house.
And beat some of these kids.
I carve them in front of my house.
We're also looking at potentially doing a farmer's market with some specialty vendors on that day since we're going to have a lot of people downtown, you know, going to start reaching out to some of the farmer's market vendors that we had and specialty meaning some Halloween-type oddities, crafts, you know, that kind of fits into the theme, potentially between 12:00 and 6:00. And then at 6:30, we'll have our Halloween pride, parade. We're going to do a grand prize of $500 this year and we're going to also do some staggered other cash prizes. We're just going to work that out yet, but $500 for the best overall creative float. We really want to see people put their effort into making this like the coolest Halloween parade on the East End, so no more, no better incentive than a little cash.
Are there any other Halloween parades on the East End?
I don't think so.
There you go. There's going to be the coolest Halloween parade on the East End.
I think the only thing that I really know of that stands out for Halloween is the Westbury Gardens Jack-o'-lanterns that they do, which is why I kind of want to do the Jack-o'-lantern walk on the East End Arts Grounds. I think, you know, we could build that up to be something really beautiful. It's one of the most beautiful places we have on downtown.
Oh, yeah.
So, and I don't know of anything else really between the city and that and here, so I think.
Will be the best.
We already are.
On the East End.
We already are. We got a great, great response about the parade last year. People really loved it.
Good.
So one change that we're going to do this year is bring the Halloween parade is going to end behind the farmer's market building on the Peconic Riverfront because some of the people who participated would like the opportunity to have sort of like a car show, but where they can park all their floats and the participants can stay there so people can come down and see what everyone's decorated and it's a nice way to wrap up the parade behind there. So also hoping that we can point people through East End Arts Grounds to walk through all the jack-o'-lanterns, come back around there. It's kind of a nice little way to get back down Main Street. And then, all right, so.
27, 28, 29.
And after on Saturday night, I know Suffolk Theater is having that 70's band and I've been in contact with the Veil of It to work on. Last year, they showed House on Wanted Hill by Vincent Price. They showed some $5 family movies, so.
Oh, wow.
Just reaching out to them to see what kind of programming, if any, they'd like to do for the weekend.
Remember that last year.
Yeah, well, you know, we, we had a short period to put together the Halloween Fest and organize it, so that's why I'm trying to get a little bit more of a head start.
No, this is great.
So we can get these things out there so people know, really, it's a little bit of everything, so you can either go out for the nightlife or you can go for a nice, family-friendly event at the Veil of It, hopefully, or, or somewhere, you know, like that.
It's kind of like the department stores putting out the Christmas stuff in August. You know, it's August, but we're putting out the Halloween stuff.
You have to, yeah. It's, you know, some people think I'm crazy for it. I had Halloween meetings a month ago and they're like, what about Live on 25? I'm like, Halloween's coming.
That's right. So we expect the press to have a nice Halloween story so, you know, we can get people excited.
It's going to be very exciting.
Especially the Sunday programs.
So let's move to Sunday, so.
This is that, too, thing.
This is cool.
Through my work in the bid and looking at other ways, I get a lot of newsletters and information about ways other Main Streets and areas work on revitalizing and working with the community. And I saw this little thing that came in the mail a couple of weeks ago about coffin races that are held a lot of different places across the country. Once you start actually researching it, you see a lot of interesting things that people do for Halloween. And we just finished a cardboard boat race, which was really successful and when I looked at this, I.
Wasn't so successful.
It was a great, oh, well. More successful for some.
It was successful for everybody but one participant.
That man cheated. He wanted a hole. I want a hole drilled in his boat to check for foam.
I'll be on the dock next year, I'll be checking.
He has it displayed in Southampton, in town. He has his boat displayed.
What boats are drilled?
No, they're not. They didn't drill his boat.
They didn't drill?
No. He's got his boat displayed in Southampton Town Hall and somebody said, oh, yeah, I think it's full of foam. I said, I thought so. I'm going in there with my drill and I'm going to drill a hole in it.
Did you check?
No, they inspected it.
They're supposed to, they're supposed to drill holes.
They had no drill, no hole in that boat.
I didn't see anything. I was too busy handing out the trophies to all the winners, so anyway.
So you never saw it, Sean?
I saw, I saw the race. We actually have it on video, too.
We were still paddling around when you were handing the trophy out.
You made that turn, you were tired.
I, I was taking on water.
Yes.
And I had him the first leg of the race and, but as I took in about 10 gallons of water, which is another 80 pounds, I ran out of steam.
Didn't you question why they drilled your boat? They drilled it through the bottom?
Yeah, that could be a problem.
To check in before the race?
Oh, before the race.
I knew I shouldn't have planned this part.
Well, at least you finished.
Let's go on with Sunday.
So anyway, you know, my immediate thought was looking at it was thinking, this is like the cardboard boat race, except on land. And, you know, there's a lot of people who really put a lot of time into building these cardboard boat races and, and, you know, I just made that connection that I think it's a really great thing. So looking at it, Manitou Springs in Colorado, I think they're in their 22nd year of this and they get about 10,000 people a year that come out just for the coffin races.
Where do they get these coffins from? I'm just curious.
So.
When are they going to be made of?
They're, they're made, but I also, looking at on some things online, it looks like people also make them out of shopping carts. Not that anybody should go grab shopping carts, but there's, you know.
I was going to say, because a real coffin is certainly very pricey.
No, they're, they're all, they're all fabricated. Actually, I started kind of, all the rules, I looked at about five websites. The rules seem to be pretty consistent between everybody, so I gave you a copy of what the specifications are that, it's about the size. So it has to be a certain size. There can't be handles on it. There can't be ropes. You have to have four people that are basically pushing this coffin down the street. Three hands have to be on it all times. The rider.
Three hands have to be on it?
Three, three people.
I only have two.
Oh, three.
Sorry.
Four people, three, well, three people have to be touching it at least. And there's a rider in it. The rider doesn't have any steering device whatsoever, so it's.
It's on wheels.
This is like Ed Denneseski's bed race. Remember his bed race?
Yes.
You guys would, you, you, we did that one or two years and then I think Ed almost had a heart attack pushing the bed. Councilman Denneseski was a former town councilman for eight years and he used to do neat things like bed races and agricultural festivals and.
What does he do now?
He works at Dynamic Radiator in, on West Main Street. He owns it. It's an auto repair shop. 727-7666 for all your car repairs.
Shameless plug.
And he's on the zoning.
Oh, he's on, yes, he's on our planning board.
So I have the coffin specifications actually on a different page. These are the rules, so I just figured you might want to look it over in case there's, you know, questions concerning safety, you know, again, this race has been going on and everyone's been doing it, but the specifications are, it needs to be two feet wide by five feet long.
I'm not making coffin and racing, so don't even think about it.
I think the town board should do one.
I think the town board should do it. The supervisor should watch.
Well, let's, let's think about this for a second.
Wait a minute.
Somebody has to sit in it.
Right.
On the board. It would be me because it's too heavy and low. Now, if I'm pushing, I'm also going to be too slow pushing this thing, so we'd have to figure out some, we'd have to get, we need new town board members.
We need, we need you to, we need you to be a cheerleader.
Can I ask you a question?
Jill could go inside. I vote, she's not here, so.
Jill could go inside, right, right.
You'll go inside mine. Well, we have to build order, too.
Can I ask you one question?
Sure.
The first statement says that each participating team shall provide a coffin conforming to specifications which are attached.
It's right here. I have an, that wasn't in there, I'm sorry. I have a copy of it right here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So the coffin specifications, I didn't make a copy of this only because I'm working, it's got times and the times we have to work out yet as well as the location, so that's one thing that I'm going to be meeting with the police department next week.
What are they made out of, the coffins?
The lighter the better.
Um, I believe you can make them out of anything. It's so, each coffin must have four firmly attached wheels attached in such a manner that the coffin will roll on four wheels when propelled, propelled down the racecourse. Wheels are not to exceed eight inches in diameter, including tires. Decorative, it doesn't say anything about what the actual material is. It's real, I think the structure.
You going to make one, John?
Oh, yeah.
I'd make one.
I think town.
Oh, well, you, you can't, no, your first statement was wrong. You can't use a shopping cart.
Well, I saw images online.
Have to be five feet long.
Well, they put the, they.
Here's the framework of it with the wheels.
What I've seen, right.
That's where the front wheels steer because if you can't have a steering wheel, you need front wheels that will guide the rate, guide it through the race.
So this was what was done in Manitou Springs. This was their specifications and, you know, again, we're, we're going to look at it, you know, once I meet with the police and, you know, I would like to go through all these things, you know, the safety with them.
I have the wheels. I just get a little box on top of it.
Well, Magano's got to have an old coffin that has slightly.
Yeah, but, yeah.
You don't want to push those things.
No, they're not, they're not cheap.
Heavy as heck.
So one thing that we could, you know, look at doing, you know, first of all, I'd love to get as many people involved in this as possible this year. We'd like to try and get this together and the information out there, hopefully within the next week or so.
This is a good idea.
This is a great idea.
It's got phenomenal, there was a coverage put on Facebook and it got 105 likes and 49 shares.
You can't have handles, though, huh?
No, there, there's some sort of.
There is a mechanism for rods to go across it. That's what you push it with? In the picture here, anyway, I don't know if that's what the guidelines are going to be for what you are doing.
Yeah.
They do have rods that, like on each side, each pusher would hold on to it to push it.
So it says on here, ropes used for pulling coffins will not be permitted. Four handles must be securely attached to the coffin. A push bar on the front and rear instead of two handles will be permitted.
Okay.
Yeah, because you have to be on each side.
Right.
It's kind of like the dog, not the, the, were they bob sleds where they run along the sides?
Oh, yeah, pushing them to start.
I think I do, I think I do have an old coffin.
They have outhouse races, too, they do.
Oh, my gosh.
Build an outhouse.
And they do that upstairs across the lake and like.
So are, are you going to have this?
It looks like we are going to absolutely do this.
I just want the listeners to start preparing.
Start building your coffin.
I have one of my.
Your coffin.
One of my.
Not literally, but the racing coffin.
One of my Halloween committee members has already started fabricating them so that we can figure out what we need to do. So just to let.
We are the funnest town on the East End. Let's just be.
We are definitely fun and I think this is going to be a lot of fun. I do need.
Now, this is going to be run by the bid and the Chamber of Commerce?
No, this is a bid. This would be.
This is a bid event.
Bid, you know, with the, my Halloween committee, that I have a great group of people, including the Girl Scouts, YMCA, who are all going to come out and help. So I would just want to stress that for Halloween, a couple of things, I really need people to come out and participate in the Halloween parade. All the information will be on the Facebook page. We have a Halloween Fest Facebook page and the website will be updated shortly, which is halloweenfestriverhead.com. Anybody can get in touch with me if they'd like to volunteer in helping decorate. We're bringing back the lamp pole decorating contest. We're going to have schools come and decorate the windows, so if anybody likes to decorate for Halloween, be in the parade and build a coffin, that's what we could really use, so.
So you could use the coffin in the parade?
Yeah. Well, what they do in these other events, and it was a little late for us to do it this year, the parade, the coffins are required to be in a parade, but our timing and what we have planned wouldn't make it work for this year. It would just be a lot to do on one day. So we just want to get a first race up and running and then, yeah, the parade is a big part of it, but it kind of needs to be on the same day because people are going to bring all.
You could bring your coffin out the day before for the parade.
People can absolutely bring their coffins to be in the parade and start to.
I was going to say, is there going to be awards for not only the race time, I mean, to be the fastest, but is there also categories of well-designed?
Yep. Best, pretty much, we're going to look at just like the cardboard boat race where it was like the best group effort, the best costumes, you know, we're, we're going to sit down and kind of take some of those categories where.
Most likely to be buried?
Uh, yeah, well.
Well, I'll tell you, those trophies do pick people up because I know what St. Elizabeth was, they might not have had a great race, but they got a trophy for design, so they're proud of that. So I mean, yeah, so you have to have trophies for design and stuff like that.
I was just curious.
It just picks the kids up and.
Jay Schneiderman's already building this coffin.
I think that's it. I think it's a great idea.
Jay Schneiderman grabbed up that trophy and said to whoever was going to put the nameplate, no, you don't have to put the nameplate, mail it to me, I'll put it on. He said, I'm taking the trophy with me.
He wanted to make sure he got it.
Yeah. I'm not making a coffin.
No, you're right in it.
It's up to you guys.
Where would it start and finish be? Be on Main Street.
Well, that's what I have to meet with the police departments as well, like this, this whole idea came together like super fast and everyone, I was thinking about doing it for next year, but everyone was so enthusiastic about doing it.
Race down McDermott.
So we do, we do need to, yeah, need.
Go down. You'll be running, all right, you will be able to stop going down McDermott.
Uh, yeah, there, yeah.
I'd go on a long race. I'd go from the crosswalk near the, near Sunnys.
Judging you guys, we don't want a long race.
Crosswalk in front of the theater.
So we have, we have a couple of places we're looking at. We like to meet the departments just to see where they feel safest and we also need to get out and kind of measure a couple of areas to see how long they are. I think that these average about 200 yards.
We're just going to have to tip them away?
Yeah, so, you know, we, we need to just go out, take a look at a couple of different areas that we could do it and make sure it's, you know, a straight enough run and, and safe, so, but we haven't met with the police.
Well, I think it's a good idea.
But we do know it's, you know, we do, are aiming for about a 3, 3:15 race time on that Sunday, you know, so hopefully.
Because it's marked by 4:30.
Right, but it'll, it would probably go pretty quick the first year, so, you know, that time may be adjusted as we get closer and see. Right. But it'll, it would probably go pretty quick the first year. So, you know, that time may be adjusted as we get closer and see uh how many participants. If it looks like we're gonna have a lot of extra participants and we may need to move it up a little bit earlier for uh to avoid it being dark. But.
Might, yeah, you might wanna, I'm thinking by four, that time, four o'clock, you're.
Yeah, right.
You might wanna move that up. Think about moving it up.
Well, one thing, I, just one thing came out.
At night with the coffin.
Yeah, feedback from the cardboard boat race is that, you know, doing something on a Sunday morning conflicts with some people going to church and that, you know, so we'd like to move things either to a Saturday or later in the day on a Sunday. So.
Well, downtown churches is done by eleven, so.
Oh, no, I don't mean move the coffin race up. I, I meant, never mind. I don't know what I meant.
I have to watch that and see. But that's why, you know, we wanna kind of have it later in the afternoon so that uh gives everybody in the community opportunity to come out and participate. So.
All right, great job.
Thank you all very much. I'll see.
We'll see you tonight.
See you tonight at.
What is the date on this?
Uh, that would be Sunday, October twenty-ninth.
Yes, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine is the weekend.
All right.
And again, thank you all for your support on everything.
Thank you. You're doing a great job.
Business doing downtown. I appreciate it.
Yeah, Diane, you are doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, young ladies.
Yep.
For supporting this young lady.
Come on down for uh.
And we'll dress up.
Riverhead Animal Shelter. He texted Drew.
Waiting River Creek. Now, we're waiting for somebody. Can I bring something up while waiting? Just so you can think about it?
Not if it's not on here. No, you're banished.
Oh, there's Drew. Come on up, Drew.
Oh, Drew's here.
I texted him.
This is gonna be the most exciting thing of the day.
No, this is really exciting.
Very exciting.
No, 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 no.
The dredging of the creek.
Dredging. Okay. So, we were gonna try to get Village Dock off the county contract because we like them. Um, but they're only on the county contract for hydraulic dredging, which we can't do. But, but. So, I talked to uh South Hole to see what they do. And they go on the county contract and they get pieces of equipment with operators. And there's, I think there's three, there's three contractors to choose from, but Chester Fields on there, we know them best. So, we can pick them. And you pick the pieces of equipment, for instance.
They have those big dump trucks.
Get two off, um, off-road articulating dump trucks, get a crawler loader instead of a bulldozer, and then get an excavator. And that's for like uh eight grand a day. The worst case would be ten, ten days. And.
Eight grand a day for ten, that's eighty thousand.
At the most.
Yeah, we do have money for this. We do have money for this.
We do?
Yep.
But I got a price from Village Dock to do it. It wasn't a bid price, but you know, it was a, a regular price. Um, it would cost in excess of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to dredge.
Oh, let's do it the way you've suggested.
Yeah.
That is really fantastic. Thank you. Unfortunately.
I know you don't get anything to say.
Unfortunately, for the, we'd love to have done it in the summer, but we can't do it in the summer because of the piping plover and winter flounder. And so, the, the dredge here is actually good because we're trying to do it like the first few days of October. Uh, that's good for anybody going out boating in the fall, but it's, uh, also will be very helpful to a lot of the homeowners down there after the last couple of snow Easter's and that hurricane, they have no sand.
To me, it's just, I know we have to do it, but the small window that they give us to be able to do it is the worst time.
It's the worst, it is. But if we can get the sand up on the beach, well, they, probably the only thing that protected a lot of those homes on Creek Road when Hurricane Sandy, is we had dredged about two weeks before Hurricane Sandy.
True.
And all of the sand we put up there was taken out. Had that sand not been there, probably would've taken houses out. Now, the re- the remaining sand is gone. So, a lot of these houses, you can see right underneath them. So.
That's true. It's good to have it done.
When's the last time of this dredge?
Two thousand, uh, fourteen.
Sandy. Sandy, when was Sandy? Fourteen or twelve?
Twelve. It was dredged once after that.
Did we?
Two thousand fourteen.
Okay. So.
And I only know that because that's when we got our permit renewed.
All right.
Um, so we, the only, it's not even a downside, but the only extra thing is we have to have someone out there full-time because all these guys are as operators. That's it.
Well, we have three engineers.
No, that's what I mean. Well, that's not a problem to get someone out there.
No, Rossini lives down there.
You're talking a week, really, probably.
For dredging?
Dig as much as you can.
Since it's ten thousand yards, it's probably gonna be over a week, but it's not gonna be two weeks. Two weeks is just the high end.
Now, the, the trucks, you gotta cart it on the beach and dump it on the beach.
Yeah.
And we have the easement, we didn't sign it yet, but we have the easement negotiated. I think we did pass the resolution with the easement last week. So, we now have the easement. Yeah, now we have easement. That was one of the problems is we really had no right to dredge that creek.
No, we didn't. We didn't own it.
So, we have a, a permanent, ten-year permanent easement to dredge the creek. So, everything's sort of in line. Let's get it done. Waiting River, you get your creek dredged. Unfortunately, we'd love to have done it in the summer, but we can't.
What year was it we did the emergency dredging after February? One year we did.
We did it a bunch of years.
We did a lot of emergencies.
We did my first three years here, we did emergency dredge.
Yeah, we stopped calling it emergency dredge because they were like, it can't be an emergency if you do it every year.
West Fish and Wildlife Service just hated us.
We tried an emergency dredge this year and it, the feedback was not favorable.
They, they, they learned to.
Favorable.
There comes the bad.
Yeah, there was. We didn't even make it.
We get that a lot. We, we get that a lot, actually.
I know.
All right. So, congratulations. Waiting River, you're gonna get dredged.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Sid, make sure your civic knows that. All right, thank you.
Is that it?
That's it. Unless you had something else.
No, good find, Drew. Good find.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that was all right.
Ms. Prudential.
Ms. Prudential.
This is an interesting one. Did you make copies of the?
Yes, of course.
So, uh.
Where is our town clerk today?
I don't know. Something like, you can read the rest, but.
So, MTAS has offered to donate.
Move the Riverhead Animal Shelter.
Seventy-two thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars under the following terms and conditions. One, a uh entrance room, at the entrance room to the animal shelter be called the Duke Lucas Welcoming Center. Two, the town give uh progress reports. And three, two years from this date, whatever money remains gets paid to R S B P.
Well, we'll spend that money before two years.
All right.
Correct.
Right.
That sounds good.
It's not an issue.
Right. I wouldn't think it would be.
No, it's seventy-two thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Right.
So, I mean, uh.
I thought it was good. Well, okay. And then, originally, you know, that was originally on the original board till politics got away. But, um, it was gonna be the R M, R M T A S Welcoming Center, but now she wants it named after a door, which is okay. I have a problem with that.
And the operator of our facility doesn't have a problem with that either. So.
All right.
So, um, we will do, you'll do a resolution for the first meeting in September so we can accept the money and
Right.
that money will probably be spent.
Pretty darn quickly because the.
Where are we with the permits? We had.
I think it's in the port right now.
No, it's ours still. We had a meeting with the Suffolk County Health Department. They want sampling of the old, um, we have to put a new uh septic system in. It's gonna be one of those upgraded nitrogen removal systems. But we have to sample the old system before we remove it. And then we'll, once that comes up clean, which it should, because that's never been anything but an office building, uh, we can either abandon that in place or dig it up. It's a, it's a strange system. It's not a, it's not cesspool, it's not septic tank rings.
Yeah, we just fill it up with sand and.
It's not cesspool rings. It's um, like, I think they're clay pipes, like you would have upstate that are, it's a leaching field.
Yeah, I was gonna say it's more like a leaching field.
Yeah, I don't know what you do to, you may just leave it alone. You may not do anything.
Right, just abandon it.
But, so we have to sample it. And so, once we get the sample results, the D E C is ready to issue their permit pending the health department permit. We've agreed to do the upgraded sanitary system because we're not hooking it up to the sewage treatment plant because we're, we can't. So, we're, hopefully, within a couple of months, I have.
Well, they use it, they use it a lot less than what it could be.
Right.
It's really, it should be a hard lift at all.
All right, thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
Why don't you stay? We're gonna go into exec session.
Wait, wait, can I just bring one fast thing up? I want everybody to think about this. Manor Lane, uh, Jamesport, there's an apple orchard. Uh, last year during the apple picking season, cars were parked on Manor Lane and we had complaints because it's an narrow road. The owner of the apple orchard wants to rent for a month of our property behind his property so we can get the cars off the road and park them there.
We talked about this. I think we're good.
We talked about this last year.
Is that the land that we preserved? Is that the?
No, it's where George.
Where, where the curve is.
The highway department.
By the sump there.
Sand mine that the highway.
We have a, uh.
So, what we, if you can contact through, get a G I S map of that area, go to the town attorney and get a license drafted.
Yep.
And insurance.
And I will, uh, well, I wanna talk to highway superintendent too.
I don't know that that's highway property. I think that's probably town-owned property. I don't think that, yeah, so it's not, I mean, you, you can.
It's town-owned?
Yeah.
You and I are back there.
Yeah, we were back there. Remember, we were back there?
I don't wanna hear about it.
There's plenty of room, there's plenty of room back there.
We know about that.
Correct.
We know that employees from there was.
So, I mean, you know, it's okay.
So, what you do, I mean, you should talk to Gio because he, obviously, he kinda controls that site.
Remember.
But let's get the, have the G I S, get a, a plot survey or something from the G I S and ask town attorney to do a license. And once you get the license, we can approve it, but you gotta move quickly because Bob Gammon told me and that's why I kicked him back to you.
Yeah.
Knocking on the door.
I think it is naturally, um, there's no vegetation. I think it's.
No, no, it's, it's all sand. Remember, it's all.
I know, but there's a lot of sand, so.
Yeah, there's a lot of sand, yeah.
No, but I, he's, he always.
Will be needed.
He always parked there.
That's why.
He always parked.
Well, years ago, he parked there because he has this big gates that he opens up. You go into his property and.
Right.
You better, you better mark off where you want it to park so it'll get stuck.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
By the.
Yeah, that's why I wanna get, like you said, a G I S.